Let's call the meeting to order. Today is a city council meeting at 5:30 PM in the city council chambers of Marshalltown, and today's date is May 14 of 2018. The mayor and councilor welcome comment from the public relating to discussion of the items that are on the agenda. You're required to step up to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, and then limit your time to three minutes so others may speak as well. The remarks may be addressed to the mayor and city council, but not specifically to any consular, and it's up to the discretion of the mayor and the council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, would those who are able, please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Weirin?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Very good. Now it's time for the mayor, consul, and administrator comments, if any. Does anyone wish to address the group tonight?
I would take this opportunity. I was very pleased to read the news that our chief Tupper was being honored by his peers, and I'm looking for the right name of it, and he had been awarded the Iowa -- selected as the Iowa Police Chiefs Association Law Enforcement Executive of the Year. This award to be presented on May 24. And as I said, he was very humble in his sharing of this information, but I think that we all should be very humbled to work with someone of such character and such service to the community. So, thank you very much, Chief Tupper.
Thank you. And I got a private email that he was going to keep that quiet tonight, not to take any bloom off the rose of the person he's going to introduce and feet, but we were pleased to see that, too.
I didn't get the memo.
And I'd like to repeat what Susan said. I would like to announce some sad news today, and that's that Duane Greenwood, at age 58, passed away at his home in Winfield, Colorado, after a courageous battle with cancer. He served as our Public Works Director and City Engineer for several cities, including Marshalltown, and so would you please keep him in your thoughts and prayers? Are there any other comments before we move on to the consent agenda? Let's use this as an opportunity to call the chief to the microphone, if you would, chief.
Thank you, chief. Mike Donahue with the Times Republican Newspaper, 135 West Main Street, Marshalltown. And for the sixth consecutive year, the sixth consecutive year, we at the Times Republican, all employees are really proud to have partnered with the police department and honor what we call the Times Republican Marshalltown Police Department Employee of the Year. And for the benefit of the viewers here and those on television, I want to stress that all police department employees are eligible to receive this award, both civilians and uniform. And while the Times Republican has partnered with the police department for six years, I do want to stress that the winner tonight and past winners were selected by their peers at the police department, and I think is what is a very fair and rigorous process. Past winners were Officer Vern Jefferson in 2013, Officer Juan Tejada in 2014, Officer Paul Heitman in 2015, Administrative Assistant Alicia Hunter in 2016, and she was the first civilian winner, and last year was Lieutenant Rick Belial. So, it's with great pleasure, I'd like to announce that the 2018 Times Republican Marshalltown Police Department Employee of the Year is Crime Scene Technician Courtney Watson.
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. I don't know where the mayor's timer thing is, but somebody hide it, because I've got some things to say. It's going to take more than three minutes. So, the first thing I want to say is thank you to the Times Republican, Mike Donahue, Jeff Hutton, and the team, Mike Schlesinger, the whole team at the Times Republican for six years ago making this award a possibility. It's been a great thing for our department, and he just read off the superstars that have received the award previously, and Courtney is certainly one of our superstars in the Marshalltown Police Department, so we're proud to have her as a member of the team. Before I tell you a little bit about Courtney, if you've been reading my email, you probably noticed it's Police Week. It's National Police Week, May 13 through the 19th. This year's National Police Week, and tomorrow's National Police Officer Memorial Day. And in 1962, President Kennedy established the week of May 15 as National Police Week, and we've been recognizing May 15 as Police Officer Memorial Day ever since. For people that wear this uniform, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. And it's a great opportunity for us to thank, and some of them are here tonight, thank the men and women serving in the police department, both as sworn officers, but also civilian employees, because it's important that they hear from us that we appreciate the work. It's a big deal. It's a big deal. I always try to use this week as the time to reflect upon those law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and have given their lives in the protection of our communities across the United States. It's also, as I mentioned, an excellent time to thank our local professionals for all that they do each and every day to serve and protect in our community. They have a tough and challenging job. It's important to remember that being a police officer can be, and very often is, a dangerous profession. According to some stats that I pulled from the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund website today, and this number changes daily, on average, one law enforcement officer is killed in line of duty somewhere in the United States every 58 hours. Since the first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 21,000, it's actually more than 21,500, police officers have been killed in line of duty. Over the last decade, on average, 151 police officers are killed in line of duty, and well over 50,000, 50,000 are assaulted. Currently, there's somewhere around 900,000 police officers in this country, 50,000 assaults on police officers every year. 129, 129 police officers were killed in line of duty in 2017. It's a number. Put it in perspective, it's 129 fathers, mothers, sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, neighbors, friends, were killed protecting their communities last year. So far this year, there have been 53 law enforcement deaths in the United States, and as I mentioned, this number changes daily, and I looked this afternoon just to make sure it hasn't changed. And I wrote an article that was in the Times Republican, and some of these stats were printed in the article. As of today, that number of 53 line of duty deaths represents a 4% increase in comparison with the same time period last year. So, people might say, "Well, that doesn't sound too bad." Here's what I'm worried about. Violent attacks against law enforcement are increasing at alarming rates. Already this year, we have seen 87 police officers shot in line of duty, 28 of which have been killed. As of today, that's 56% higher than last year. Used to be, we were seeing police officers killed in car crashes, and so you have chiefs that implement seatbelt wear policies and pursuit policies, and everybody gets up in arms because the chief has got a restricted pursuit policy, but it's because we're worried about killing officers in car crashes. We're not doing that anymore, but people are shooting and killing us at alarming rates across this country. Our nation's law enforcement officers face dangers every day, but now, apparently deliberate and targeted attacks by people who wish to harm cops has become a new reality for everybody in this room wearing this uniform. It takes a special person to be successful in this profession. The city of Marshalltown, you should know, the city of Marshalltown is very fortunate to have dedicated and compassionate professionals serving our community every day. The men and women of the Marshalltown Police Department strive every day to provide exceptional police services, and I'm very fortunate to work with such a wonderful group of professionals. And I want to thank everybody here that works in the police department, whether you're an officer, support staff, 911, thank you for the work that you do. It's important, you're making a difference. And I also want to thank the deputies that serve in this county, federal law enforcement that serves in this county, state police that serves in this county. We're very fortunate, and I would have a large group of law enforcement professionals protecting and serving throughout the state, and they're all doing an outstanding job. I also, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our reserve officers who volunteer to do this job for $1 a year and go through a boatload of training to make it happen. We, in Marshalltown, we have a wonderful citizen volunteer group, wonderful, and they do so many things for our department and our community, and we really appreciate them. I also want you to know that I appreciate you. I appreciate everything that you do. City Administrator Kinzer, all the mayors that I've worked with, all the city council people that I've worked with, the support that you show us is amazing, and it's representative of the support that we receive from the community. We are blessed in this community to serve and protect in a city that values public safety, and they support us, and we really appreciate that. And we make mistakes, and we do some silly things sometimes that we've always rectified, but we're always supported, and we really appreciate the support that you all provide to us. As I said, we're truly blessed to work in this community. So, that's what I had to say about Police Week. Thank you for indulging me. Now I want to talk to you a little bit about Courtney Watson. Civilian employees often work in the background of police departments, and they don't deserve the credit, or they don't get the credit they deserve, I'm sorry. Gosh, can I start over? They don't get the credit that they deserve, they work in the background frequently. However, without people like Courtney, Alicia Hunter, a lot of other people working in our department, we could not function effectively, efficiently, or professionally. The professionals working in these support roles provide services of tremendous importance, and I'm excited to, you know, introduce Courtney tonight, and most of you probably already know her, so you're being reacquainted with her, but she is one of our amazing, I'm not going to call her a civilian employee, just one of our amazing team members, that does a great job on a daily basis to serve our community. Courtney began her MPD adventure in June of 2004. She spent much of her career working behind the scenes as our crime scene technician, and she also gets to manage our property room, which is a nightmare in and of itself. The work that Courtney performs each day, it's not very glamorous. Quite frankly, it's tedious, it's dirty, and it's very challenging work. It's also tremendously important. Her duties are critical to the law enforcement services we provide for this community. If there's a high profile or violent crime to be investigated, Courtney is in the mix. She's right there with the cops and the detectives trying to figure out what happened. And during the seven years that I've been fortunate to work for you, if there's been a high profile or violent crime that's occurred, we would not have solved it without Courtney. She's an important part of what we do. Everybody needs to understand that. She's successfully assisted in scene management, investigation of countless crimes like homicides, robberies, burglaries, sexual assaults, a lot of lower profile crimes that you might not ever hear about, but they're still important. Somebody's a victim of a crime, they want us to solve that crime, and Courtney helps us do that. She works in the muck and the mire, gathering important pieces of evidence that are necessary to solve crime in the 21st century. She's called upon 24/7. She's the only one we have, folks. We have other captains and lieutenants and sergeants and police officers and detectives. She's the only one we have that does this important work, and we call on her a lot, and she responds at a moment's notice. We're fortunate to have someone of her character and work ethic serving our community. Courtney's one of the busiest employees that we have. The list of her duties is longer than my arm, and I'm sure there's lots of things that you do that I don't even know about. I want everybody to know that she's established herself as a hard-working professional. She comes to work every day, ready and determined to be her best. She takes on all assignments with pride and a commitment to excellence. She refuses to fail. I'm not sure I've ever seen you fail, by the way, Courtney, and she can always be counted upon to get the job done. She never disappoints with her work. She's proud of her work, and she's proud to work at the Marshalltown Police Department. It's also something a lot of people don't know about Courtney is, she's not just recognized by the people she works with every day, but her peers across Iowa and across this country. Courtney is a subject matter expert, and people recognize her as such, and she's been involved with some associations and done some work to help train other people that do her kind of job. Quite simply, Courtney's a vital member of our team. We quite simply could not be successful without you. She's well-liked by coworkers and supervisors and peers and the community, everybody she comes in contact with, because she has a positive and professional demeanor, and she works hard, and we appreciate that. I always try to, for everybody that I've recognized, come up with some terms or words that might best describe Courtney, or the people, and here's what I came up with for Courtney. Professional, determined, reliable, dedicated, trusted, honorable, awesome, I like that word, I use that a lot, important, vital, you've heard this one from me before, rock star. You're a rock star, Courtney. But most importantly, and maybe this will mean the most for her, crime fighter, because that's what she does. She does all of this, by the way, as the spouse of a police officer, and my wife could come up here and tell you how horrible that can be at times, quite frankly, and she does this, her husband Sergeant Tom Watson is here tonight, and Tom is also one of our superstar employees, but she's the spouse of a police officer and the mother of three incredible kids, balances all of this stuff. I don't know how she does it. I'm not sure how she balances all this stuff, but what I do know for certain is that we're a better police department because of her. And so, thank you, Courtney, for everything that you do to serve our department and our community. Thank you for serving each day with passion and compassion. Thank you for your unwavering support of your team members and your community, and congratulations on this incredible honor, well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. That was, wow. I'd also like to thank the Times Republican, as well as the award committee, for this recognition. It means a lot to me, but I've been with the department for 14 years. I grew up in Marshalltown. It's a great community. It's an amazing police department. I work beside some of the best of the best here. I like coming to work every day and look forward to the next 19 years. So, again, I just really appreciate this honor and recognition, so, thank you.
Congratulations, Courtney. You know, I was interviewed last week by Ken Hughey about the National Police Week, and it was easy for me to spout about what a good force we have here, how much outreach there's been, the coffee with the cop, the pizza with the cop, the meetings at the churches, the meetings at the public library. That may explain why our Crime Stoppers is doing so well. We had a meeting over the noon hour today. We've had so many tips. Ames just folded theirs, they weren't getting anything done, and our force has been able to arrest a lot of people. We just found somebody out in Colorado recently as a result of the tip. And then we got the Vests for the Best program that is going on right now, and I'm told by Tom McCoy that we are going to sail right through that to get the better protection for our officers. So, it's a good working relationship with the police force, and I sure appreciate what everybody in blue does. And then let me make one final plug. If you go downstairs and walk into police station, you can buy a Back the Blue sign for $10. Fun stays here, it helps the police department, and I'm proud to have that sign in my yard. It's a pain to take it off when I mow, but, you know, Rebecca. Anyway, thank you very much. I think I just went over the three-minute limit. Let's go on to the consent agenda. First, I'd call for a motion to approve it.
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have the clerk read the items and then vote on it.
Approve the council amendments of April 23. Approve bill list in the amount of $2,098,675.27. Received the building report for March and April. Resolution approving settlement agreement. And that would be it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I'm not sure we do that on a motion like this. Let's call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carried. Very good. Would you read Resolution Number Three, please?
Resolution authorizing the city of Marshalltown to request assignment of tax certificates held by Marshall County.
Is this part of our dilapidated?
Yes, this is, it's actually designating these as properties to be placed on the public nuisance tax sale, which would occur in late June. This separates them from the regular tax sale, and so we have until tomorrow to get this list to the county treasurer.
Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Second.
Your Honor, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carried again. Resolution Number Four, please.
My fingers are not moving very fast today. Resolution approving contract and bond for construction of the 2018 micro-surfacing repair
This would just be another resolution, except authorizing the mayor to sign the contract when we have that prepared, but this is an extension of the item previous.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Discussion, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like Justin's input and follow him through with the safeguards that we as a city are asking for in our contracts, that includes bonding, measuring outcomes, and the final sign-off. Could you go through that for the general public and for the council?
Do my best off the cuff, yes. We do require a performance bond from the contractor, which is very similar to insurance. It's a means of assuring that the contractor provides us a quality product based, sorry, what's the word I'm looking for, that their materials?
Industry standard.
Yes, yes, it's industry standard, that the materials meet specifications, and that their quality, and that the work they do is quality. We also, as a city, require a four-year warranty bond, so that once the work is done, it is warranted for four years for those materials and workmanship. I'm sure I could go on to further detail, but that's a pretty succinct explanation.
Those are surety bonds, in other words.
They are, yes.
Okay. When we sign off, we as a city sign off, you, of course, have the overview of that, and the final decision comes to the council for payment and completion.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to go through that as a review for the council, but also for the general public, because sometimes it gets misunderstood, so, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We have a motion already? Let's call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
That is carried as well. Let's go to Resolution Number Five.
Resolution approving contract for equipment purchase for the police and fire headquarters project.
As the project manager for the city, I'll field this one, but may have to turn over questions to the chief. This is a resolution to approve purchasing of mobile storage, so the shelves that slide on a rail that's embedded in the floor. That way, we save space within our new police and fire facility. And for equipment lockers, for our crime scene technician for her storage lockers, or for the department's storage lockers, this is a contract for purchase of equipment for anything, lockers, shelving, equipment like that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to the chief.
Let's call for a motion to approve it first.
I so move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I'd like to ask, Justin, how many more of these kind are we going to see? Because with some discussion with the contractor, some of this, a lot of this stuff was left
This would just be another resolution except authorizing the mayor to sign the contract when we have that prepared, but this is an extension of the item previous.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Discussion, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like Justin's input and follow him through with the safeguards that we as a city are asking for in our contracts, that includes bonding, measuring outcomes, and the final sign-off. Could you go through that for the general public and for the council?
I'll do my best off the cuff. Yes, we do require a performance bond from the contractor, which is very similar to insurance. It's a means of assuring that the contractor provides us a quality product based, sorry, what's the word I'm looking for, that their materials...
Industry standard.
Yes, yes, it's industry standard, that the materials meet specifications, and that they're quality, and that the work they do is quality. We also, as a city, require a four-year warranty bond, so that once the work is done, it is warranted for four years for those materials and workmanship. I'm sure I could go on to further detail, but that's a pretty succinct explanation.
Those are surety bonds, in other words.
They are, yes.
Okay. When we sign off, we as a city sign off, you, of course, have the overview of that, and the final decision comes to the council for payment and completion.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to go through that as a review for the council, but also for the general public, because sometimes it gets misunderstood. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You have a motion already? Let's call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
That is carried as well. Let's go to resolution number five.
Resolution approving contract for equipment purchase for the police and fire headquarters project.
As the project manager for the city, I'll field this one, but may have to turn over questions to the chief. This is a resolution to approve purchasing of mobile storage, so the shelves that slide on a rail that's embedded in the floor. That way, we save space within our new police and fire facility, and for equipment lockers, for our crime scene technician for her storage lockers, or for the department's storage lockers. This is a contract for purchase of equipment for anything, lockers, shelving, equipment like that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to the chief.
Let's call for a motion to approve it first.
I so move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I'd like to ask, Justin, how many more of these kind are we gonna see? Because with some discussion with the contractor, some of this, a lot of this stuff was left out of the bid. Are we gonna see how many more? Just roughly, has the chiefs come up with some more stuff that's been left out that we're gonna have to do, and we're gonna have another one of these?
Well, as we had a discussion, was it two, three weeks ago, or was it five weeks ago now? We talked about increasing the budget for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, of which this would fall under that category. Yes, I can share your sentiment that it was left out of the bid, but as an engineer, I always look at it, and I'm sure in your industry before, we would have paid for it had it been in the bid. We would have paid for it now. Reviewing this pricing, the vendor is giving us the National Joint Purchasing Alliance pricing, so we did not go through a bid. It went through that process as part of that purchasing consortium. Again, I can understand the sentiment of leaving it out of the bid, but we would have paid for it in the bid, or we pay for it here to be installed.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wonder how many more of these we're gonna face.
I'm trying to think off the top of my head.
At 200, and what is it, 223,000 each go-around? It only takes three more, and that million dollars is gone.
That's correct. It looks like the chief would like to make a comment.
I just want to thank Justin for working his tail off, by the way, to hold my feet to the fire and Chief Larson's feet to the fire to make sure that we're keeping within the overall, big-picture budget. I think that's important to point out, but from the police department's standpoint, I am not aware of any other items of this nature that are gonna come up. Now, you all have been involved with building projects before, and there might be some small things that we discover here and there, but I'm not aware from the police department's side of business that there's gonna be a large item like this again. All of this equipment is very critical, by the way, and most of it is built into the building, so I think I would have assumed that it was in the hard costs, but I guess I was wrong. And so, that's on me, and I apologize for that mistake, but...
No, that's all right.
This is, I don't think we're gonna have another big item like this from the police department's standpoint, and Chief Larson's not here tonight, but I'd be shocked if there's anything on his side, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
That is carried as well. I'm addicted to driving past that building, watching it go up. That's just become a lot of fun, and I can't wait till we get the two forces moved in there. Next item, please.
Resolution creating a partial reimbursement program for city-ordered sidewalk improvement.
Let's call for a motion to approve first.
I so move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thanks.
I was gonna say, this is my attempt at putting together pieces of conversation from our discussion on April 23. And so, what is proposed is that if we order a sidewalk improvement, and the owner completes it, they can request reimbursement for 50% of the project, up to $500. So, we've set for ourselves through this sort of a limit of what we would know the maximum amount per property a sidewalk would be ordered, and would have some ability to set a budget. I've estimated for fiscal year, the fiscal year to start July 1, a $30,000 cost to this. That would be 60 sidewalks. That is purely an estimate at this point, or that'd be 60 properties, so that would be purely an estimate at this point until we really got into this further and knew how many letters we were sending out, and how many people were going to comply versus us having to treat it as a nuisance abatement in the end.
It's my understanding we're focusing, starting near the schools to try to make them walkable?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or discussion, further discussion?
I have one, Your Honor. On the letter that you sent out, it says, "Therefore, the proposed reimbursement of $500 or 50% of the project." It doesn't say with a maximum of $500, so I think the 50% of the project cost not to exceed should be put in there.
I want to say that in the resolution, perhaps I didn't word it correctly in the memo, but the resolution which you would be approving does say reimbursement of 50% of the cost not to exceed $500. So, I apologize for that mistake.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
I would like to just say that I think this is bad timing. I'm against requiring us to spend more money right now. We have a ordinance amendments coming, changes coming. I would just as soon see this done later, if at all.
Any other comments?
I agree with some of what Mr. Hoop said. I like the idea of having the option to, I think this is what we, one of the options we discussed was to basically have the city find a contractor who's willing to replace sidewalks, and then get, you know, a set price for this many linear feet of sidewalk, and then just go around, see which neighbors want to participate in that program. But I'm thinking, just because up to this point, we've always said, gotta pay for your own sidewalk. We just say, it's time to be done. We found a low price. This is what it's gonna cost you, and just handle it that way, because I agree with you. It's gonna be very expensive. I don't like the timing either, but it's never a good time. We talked about this in, what, how many years ago? 12 years ago, probably? 11 years ago? And we didn't want to do it then either, and I think it just needs to be, needs to be done, and we can start around the schools.
Appreciate the input. This is why we have a hearing, though, so I suspect these things will be vetted at the hearing itself. Is there any further discussion about the resolution pending?
This pertains to just sidewalk repair, not installation of new. Would that be correct?
That is correct. At that first meeting in June is where we'll be talking about the gaps, and talking about what those costs would be, and then talking about prioritization and funding for those, how that would work. So, this is just purely for existing sidewalks and any sidewalk improvements that the city would order.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
No.
4-3, passed.
Carried. Thank you. Would you read the next item, please?
Resolution setting public hearing for the fiscal year 18, second budget amendment.
Well, let's call for the motion to approve it first.
I move for approval.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Another tie. Go ahead.
Good evening. Diana Steiner, Finance Director. It's coming towards the end of the fiscal year, so we have a few items we'd like to do a budget amendment for. Jessica, do you have control? Can you open the document up? Official form? The third item down. There we go. So, in the first column of numbers, this is our budget amendment from back in March when we did our first budget amendment. The middle column is what we're changing, and then the third column would be the end result. So, under revenues, the $8,500, that is money that we'll be getting from the Iowa lead grant. It's a reimbursement of a machine repair. The $59,345 under miscellaneous, this is the skate park $20,000 grant. It's a $1,000 ICAP grant, and the YMCA said they would reimburse us $325. It also includes a liant rebate for the library of $8,020, and we're expecting some more insurance proceeds for the airport damage from last summer for the hangars, so another $30,000. The transfers in are coming from the lost fund, $18,500, so those are your revenues. Any questions on that section? Okay, we'll go down to the expenditures. Public safety, $26,500. This is from the police department retirement, $18,000. We originally have this budgeted down in the general government line, and as people retire, then we move it to the line where it's actually spent. It also includes an early hire paid by the lost fund of $8,500 for a police officer. In public works line, $52,000. This includes a general liability insurance of $22,000. Our policy premium did go up, so we need to cover that, and then the airport insurance damage of $30,000, which we've already paid out. The next line, health and social services, $27,500. This includes an increase to the senior citizens center costs for utilities and such. It also includes $10,000 in state-led grant, which I will tell you is increased here, but is reduced in the community and economic development line down below. So, we're just switching places for it as wages are incurred, and we know more what the actual wages are. It also includes the $8,500 lead grant repair. In culture and recreation line, $43,295. This includes the skate park of $20,000. That doesn't seem right. Hold on. Yes, that's right. Skate park, $20,000, the ICAP and YMCA reimbursement, the liant reimbursement, and the Civic Rec software, which you approved several meetings ago, for $13,950. The community and economic development, $6,770. This is to reallocate the wages, the $10,000 I talked about above for the lead grant, and reallocate the funeral home demolition of $16,770. In the first budget amendment, we originally showed it as being paid out of lost, and that was incorrect. It should have been paid out of TIF funds, so we're just making that correction now. In general government, a negative $65,770. We're moving the retirement health savings account money up to where it needs to actually be paid out of, and we're also funding it with the general liability policy. And we're paying for the senior citizens center. So, we're just moving money around there between categories. The capital projects, $10,000. This includes the design and engineering of Lynn Creek and the Iowa River Bike Trail. You had originally approved $65,000. We think we'll spend $10,000 this fiscal year. And then the transfers out, $18,500, that equals the transfers in. So, it's a net difference, a net increase of $32,450, and that is all coming from your local option sales tax that you had already approved for the Civic Rec software, $13,950, the early hire of a police officer, $8,500, and $10,000 for the bike trail. Any questions? So, we need to set the public hearing for May 29 at our noon meeting, because it has to be to the county by the end of the month.
Any questions? Comments or discussion?
Great job.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Like the trend. Let's have the roll call.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Okay. Would you summarize item eight for us, please?
This is time for public hearing regarding resolution, adopting tentative resolution, accepting the subordination agreement for property interest at 1222 Oxford Avenue, Liscum, Iowa, for a lead hazard control project.
And I will declare the public hearing open at 6:15. Have there been any written comments received by the clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Any public comments? Staff review?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. We talked about this at your last meeting with the tentative resolution. This is a subordination agreement. We frequently see these when somebody is refinancing their home for various reasons, and that's the case here. As mentioned, this is a property in Liscum, Iowa, but since it is a city project, we hold lien, and so that's why it comes before the council. The total amount of the lien is $18,500. They're still in their first year, so none of that has been forgiven yet, so we would be holding that same amount due just in a second position as they're refinancing to get some additional funds for home improvements. And so, the appraised value of the home is $155,000. The new mortgage amount and the lien is $117,600, so it's still below that appraised value, and which we'd recommend approval.
Any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Well, we'll declare the public hearing closed at 6:17 PM. And to go on to the next public hearing, number nine.
Can we have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'm sorry.
Second. Who moved?
Yeah, Lamer, and Weren, second.
Thank you.
Let's do roll call on that one, then.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried. And now I declare the public hearing, that public hearing closed at 6:17. And so, let's go on to item number nine.
We have a public hearing regarding plans and specifications resolution for the Iowa River Trail Phase III project.
And let's declare that public hearing open now at 6:17 as well. Did you receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments?
I'd like to know what Phase III is.
Yes, sir. Phase III of trail construction would pave the 10-foot-wide bike high trail from the northwest quadrant of the Summit Street Bridge to Radio Tower Road, but not including construction of the very small bridge adjacent to Radio Tower Road. How many linear feet approximately, Heather? Okay, just shy of a mile of pavement, and our approximation is about $350,000, of which most funding comes from state rec trail grants, and the local match would be made up by the Trails Inc. Group. So, we don't have any city funds other than staff time in kind into this project.
And this project's all within the city limits?
Uh, no, but the city, the city of Marshalltown is the owner, is it? I don't think, I think...
None of it is. Tell me about it.
Yeah, I don't think any of it is within the city of Marshalltown limits.
I think you're out.
I'd have to get a map to confirm that for myself, but yes. But the reason that the city of Marshalltown is the administrator is that we are the owner of the former rail right-of-way, as it extends to Albion and then on to Hardin County.
This part of the trail, then, has no cost in essence to the city.
That would be correct. No dollar cost.
And I think the Trails Inc. Group has raised about $4 million, a little plus, since its inception, to get us that far, at least.
Yes.
I ran it yesterday, and I have to tell you, it's really clear, clean, nice, wide, easy to pass people, and greenery and canopy trees along it. The in-town portion is really nice. I'm out of order. Are there any other consular questions?
When would construction take place?
Later in the summer, probably at this point, we'd be looking at open bids. Later this month or in early June, I can't remember. Construction's starting roughly around July 1. Allowing for construction to start, I believe a contractor would come in and knock this out in a very short amount of time, so they'd have July, August, or September to get their work done.
It really just took a matter of days once they got rolling to get the two miles that are already in existence.
Yes. The concrete paving is a pretty simplified process.
Can you tell us what they're gonna do with the bridges? Do you know?
I don't believe I have an answer for you at the moment. The Trails Group, along with the, with my presence and the Parks Department, have been studying the bridges as you progress on to Albion. Most of them are not in a usable condition where you want to have it open to the public. Those wooden bridges sufficed for a long time for the railroad, and were band-aided and held together for a long time. It's been at my request that we continue to look at those, because I really don't want the city to accept a liability for those bridges. The current plan, but still no inception of that plan... The current plan, but still no inception of that plan, would be a replacement of those wooden structures with a precast beam that you could set into an abutment structure, hopefully reducing the cost for the bridges. But again, that's a plan yet to come.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. I will declare, oops, we need a motion to declare the public hearing closed. We don't, I guess I get to declare that on my own. I need a better cheat sheet here. So the public hearing is closed now at six twenty-one PM. Let's move on to ordinances then.
I move for approval. I'll second.
Thank you. I do need to put that in the cheat sheet up here. I literally have one. Call the roll, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carried, seven oh. Now on to item I, ordinances. Would you read the first one, please?
Third reading of the ordinance, adopting the National Fire Protection Association National Electric Code as the city's code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. End of the formal meeting now, we move on to discussion items. Item J, and the first discussion item is the bicentennial Anson Land Exchange.
Anne Selness, Parks and Rec Director. I brought this opportunity to you for discussion at the April twenty-third council meeting. I'm looking for a motion to approve moving forward with the Anson Bicentennial Land Exchange, and here is why. The soccer fields at Bicentennial Park have been used for years by the Adult Soccer League. These fields are maintained by the Marshall Community School District, and they are no longer interested in maintaining this area for public use. The city has been approached by the school district to exchange land at Anson Park for the soccer fields at Bicentennial Park. The school is already utilizing our parking lot at Anson, and this additional land will give them more functional and usable space for future school needs. The Anson area that the school would be receiving from the city includes some open land and a ball field. The ball field would still be available as a public practice field, so the city is not losing this amenity at this time. Adding the soccer field land at Bicentennial Park gives the city an opportunity to expand this park on the west side of the community, along with the three-point-five acre land donation. This land gift is very timely as we work to expand recreational opportunities on this side of the city. Our acceptance of the soccer fields at Bicentennial Park is in keeping with our goal of providing recreational opportunities for all ages and abilities in our diverse city. Loss of these fields would displace more than twenty adult teams who have not been able to find an alternative location to play. The twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty-eight Park and Rec Master Plan recommends that in the future, we establish connections from the Bicentennial Soccer Fields to the playground equipment and add amenities such as a prairie path, a natural playscape, and seating space with views to the soccer fields. Costs for us are adding a dumpster at fifty-five dollars a month, possible porta-potties at seventy-five dollars apiece, although there's already restroom facilities there. And I'm thinking if maybe we reconfigured the way the soccer fields sit, we could push people back towards the restrooms that we already have, and then there would be some minimal mowing. We already do mow that area, we have contract mowers, and then we also do mow some of the rougher area there, so we already have mowers in the area. So I'm thinking from my end, there's minimal maintenance moving forward. So I think it's in the best interests of the city to move forward with this land exchange to consolidate properties and maximize school and city resources.
Thank you for that explanation. Does anyone have any questions, Anne? I, for one, appreciate the willingness of the school district to do this. Thank you, Dr. Shudee, for coming up with the idea and being here tonight. And I got to tell you, Anne, I'm hearing nothing but good things about the footsall courts and how many kids are playing soccer there. I understand we're getting the new bathroom down there soon.
Wednesday.
And I haven't seen the new graffiti wall, but I hear that's pretty wildly popular at the skate park, too. So keep up the good work in our parks, truly.
Thank you.
So can I ask a question? The mowing out there at the soccer fields, that school land and we're mowing, I know that the soccer players.
No, we're not mowing that.
We're not?
No, we just mow our part, we have the east side of the park.
Yes.
Yep.
So would the school district mow the rest of the fields till something is done? Or is that just going to let it get overgrown?
Theron, you can probably answer that, but I would assume they would mow that. We wouldn't take on the mowing until we have the property.
Because I know the adult soccer players were keeping it mowed and looked pretty decent. I'd hate to see it just get overgrown while we're waiting.
I'm sure between the school district and the city, we can figure out how to keep it looking nice.
Your Honor, comment?
Yes, sir.
I was skeptical at the beginning of this transfer, this trade, and so on. I asked for public input. I received none, none. So I'm assuming, and I would think, and I'm in favor of this, that it's in the public interest for this land swap to occur in the hopes that both properties would be improved, would become better assets than they are now, and that the public would have free use of those within certain restrictions between the school district and the Park and Recreation Department. That's my understanding, and that's what I got also from our superintendent. So I've changed and softened the position to support it. I think it's a good move. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only question I have in the master plan, when does this fall in the timeline? And what is the additional cost to gain access and usage to the additional improvements on the Bicentennial Park expansion?
Um, let's see, in the master plan, I have the Bicentennial Park right here. It says, expand diversity of amenities with amenities such as a disc golf course, prairie paths, natural playscape, and event seating space with views to the soccer fields. Provide updated basketball hoops and pavement markings. Incorporate more benches and trash receptacles within the park. Improve condition of the aesthetics of the park shelter and restrooms. Incorporate more lighting. Establish connections from the parking area and play equipment to the soccer fields. Pave and clearly mark paving stalls, or parking stalls, and then incorporate signage to clearly indicate where to enter the park. So it's in the plan.
What year, though? I think that's what he asked.
Oh, oh, let's see here. Park diversity comes under long-term plans. Midterm plans were, improve the condition and aesthetics. Short-term plans were establish connections from the parking area, play equipment, and soccer fields to the existing sidewalk. We do have some money in the CIP right now for sidewalks. This was not in there right now, though. We're working on Mega Ten and West End for sidewalks this spring.
Your Honor, I have a comment, please.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm not really opposed to it, but I have some really deep concerns. We've already added another park out on Eighteenth Avenue, and that park hasn't had anything done to it yet. And Anne and I have had conversations here this evening. Because of the rate that we pay our part-time people for summer help, we can't fill the slots. So we're either going to have to decide real quick to raise that minimum summer help rate that we pay them. I think we're at eight bucks, right, eight and a quarter, something like that? And they can go down to any food gender down here, make ten bucks. They're going to make thirteen bucks an hour de-tasseling. We can't hire people. And if we're going to expand our park system and stuff, we ought to be able to have people to do the work. And right now, we don't have them. So I guess I'm not opposed to it, but once we get it, we're going to have to do something so we can take care of it.
And so I posed that question to Mrs. Selness, and she said that, one, it is a property swap, so once we give up Anson Park, that piece of Anson Park, excuse me, that the school district would take care of that instead of us, the city. And then the other piece is that we already own the east side of the park, so we already have a mowing contract out there, and it would be easy enough to add it to the mowing that's already happening. So it didn't, to her, it didn't, it was a blip on the radar, the extra maintenance.
Thank you. Any other comments? And if anyone in the public wishes to address us, please feel free to do so. Standing is one good way, raising a hand will work for me, too.
Good evening. Stephen McCann, fifteen-twenty Summit Street, here in Marshalltown. Your Honor, you're correct. The footsall courts are being heavily used, and it's fun to see all the activity down the street from us. Just wanted to speak for a minute or two about my observations of the usage of the soccer fields at Bicentennial. For approximately five years, my family and I would watch my son-in-law, who was the head coach at Marshalltown High School and an assistant coach at Marshalltown Community College. But Chris played in one of the adult soccer leagues out there. Two fields, there were usually three to four games every Sunday. You figure about fifteen athletes per team. Very simple math would tell you that's about two hundred athletes using the soccer fields on one Sunday a week. I guess there's only one Sunday a week, isn't there? But that's pretty extensive usage. So I am, as a member of the public, I'm very much in favor of this land swap and having some more soccer fields for the adult soccer leagues.
That's another place that's fun to drive by on a Sunday, to see the activity out there.
Absolutely.
And credit to your son-in-law for helping on the idea of the footsall courts, and for Ricky Hernandez, too.
Yes.
We're turning this into the Footsall Capital. We got a tournament every weekend, I understand it here. And our other soccer fields on the east side of town are in good shape and the west side of town. It's a pretty good town to be a soccer player in.
It is.
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
May, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
For a direction for staff, I think I would move that we tell staff to go ahead and proceed with the transfer at our next meeting.
Anybody have an objection to that? That is the staff direction. Thank you.
Zero second. Second.
Okay, we'll call it a motion in a second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Is this not just for discussion?
Yeah.
Or is this towards what?
It's giving us direction.
Got you, yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
I forget that we changed our rules that allow us during a discussion phase to actually have a formal motion like that, to give direction to the staff. Okay, let's go on to the other item of discussion under J, and that's the proposed amendments to the sidewalk ordinance.
Yes, in our ongoing conversation of sidewalks, we noted that our ordinance really did need some updates to it. And so as I began working with Justin and Michelle on some of the different things, we really decided that a complete rewrite was in order. American Legal Publishing is the company that we're working with on the recodification of our ordinances. And so I was able to go to see some of the ordinances that they've written for other cities for sidewalk chapter, and why recreate the wheel, or have them potentially recreate the wheel for us when we're talking about this right now. And so I apologize that we didn't include the current ordinance in the packet, but this is a completely rewritten ordinance in terms of adding in definitions, more definitions, clearly stating the responsibility for maintenance of sidewalks, still identifying, you know, when sidewalk construction can be ordered and that we may order repairs, which are all duties that are, or abilities that are granted to cities under the Code of Iowa. The sections that I would highlight that we did keep, new sidewalks required. This is based on an ordinance from two thousand and one, and it's still a very valid ordinance as we, you know, have to talk about sidewalk construction. And then we are also keeping, or proposing to keep, the deferments of new sidewalk construction, but change the process to make it more administrative with an appeal right to the city council. Currently, the city council sees none of these sidewalk deferments at all, as they're all currently handled through planning and zoning and through the zoning board of adjustments. So that would be a change in that process to give the applicant the ability to appeal to the council if they did not agree with the staff decision. We are also, we currently do have a permit requirement for sidewalks and then standards as well. We did do a little bit more, or what American Legal Publishing has had out there is a lot more stated in terms of, you know, what standards are out there compared to what we had previously. And then there's a lot of things that come at the end, which were items that I found consistently in those ordinances produced by American Legal Publishing about, you know, barricade and warning lights and placing that upon the contractor or the owner. You know, what happens if you fail, that you can't encroach on the sidewalk, and that if you, there's all sorts of other things you can't do, including setting fire on any sidewalk, or defacing, or keeping debris, or other things. So, and you can see the references to the Code of Iowa in there as well. And so this is just an initial draft before you. It would be something that would take three readings, but it is something that we would like to move forward with.
Any discussion?
Discussion here, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I know these are proposed amendments and so on. Consular Isom brought up a time or two ago. Some small things that have maybe some significance. No colored cement, for example. No imprints. I don't see it in here. It's small potatoes, again. No imprints. If you see it in here, show me or tell me. As long as it's proposed, I think that type of thing should be included or otherwise addressed somehow.
I believe it's in sidewalk standards. That if it's not a standard that we've identified, then it's not something that would be allowable.
If it's not said, it sometimes gets in the way.
Yeah, and so, I mean, basically, we're talking about the type of construction, the type of base, the bed, the length, the width, the depth, and stating, you know, oops. And then grade, elevation, slope, finish. Those are all things that would be looked at when someone from the engineering department went out to do an inspection, so.
Is that something we can do on the permit form, too?
I would say if somebody wanted something in a different color, I mean, if we're not regulating it, we're not regulating it. I don't know that that would be problematic or would interfere. My understanding is to have colored concrete as an extra cost, and so that would be a property owner decision in my mind.
My feeling is I would suggest that we eliminate any color, any variation whatsoever, and stick with plain, simple Portland cement. Now, how we can make that clear and attainable, I don't know for sure.
I mean, under A, where it says that cement, you know, Portland cement concrete shall be the only cement used, we can certainly add that no.
Additives.
No additives, yes. I'll leave that up to Justin.
Oh, yeah, you can't say that, because in the winter, you're.
You're not going to be able to say no additives.
Yes.
Because concrete mixes use additives all the time.
Sorry. You're right.
Can we eliminate color?
We could write something to that effect. No, we cannot eliminate additives or.
Yeah, I got you.
The ready-mixed concrete industry will be.
I'm sorry.
Before you faster than.
I am sorry. So while you're there, it's always been my understanding, and I think because I, we had a lawsuit in Boone over this. From the property line to the back.
From the property line to the back of curb on the city property, all the water from that area that the city owns is supposed to drain into the street, so we control the drainage. If we're gonna set the grade of the back of the, the back of the sidewalk equal to the top of the curb, that won't work.
Right, that would be a level.
Always been six inches above the back of the curb is where the back of the sidewalk is. That gives you six inches of drain across there to keep, so you, so this in here where it says it's to be the same as the back of the curb won't work.
I'd wanna do a little review, I don't know about the six inches, but yeah.
Then you put, then you put a two, two percent slope on it and now the front of the sidewalk is lower than your curb and you're not controlling.
Creating a trough.
Right.
We could review that and.
We need to, we need to check that.
It's nice to have a water expert up here.
No, we just, when I was Director of Public Works over there, we got sued over that. I know how that works.
I suspect we don't really need a motion to direct, to further this. What I would recommend is that if any of us have any other suggestions, we know to direct them to you Jessica.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, if, if those are things that we can review in our minor changes, that I'd, I'd prefer to move this forward for at least a first reading on May twenty-ninth to get things moving, rather than bring it back for discussion, but it certainly can come back for discussion at that point too. Or no action would be taken on the twenty-ninth if there's still something of concern.
Very good. Okay, we're to the item K, public comment. Are any members of the public interested in taking the microphone?
I have one.
Sure.
If I can.
You may.
Couple, three weeks ago when we were discussing the bike trail going behind the bowling alley and down to, along the golf course to Lynn Creek, it was my understanding at that time and has always been that the city owned just the area along Lynn Creek. But Mr. Thompson was here and he said, no, we own a lot more than that. I took and told him I thought he was wrong, he was right. I looked, I went and did some research over at the county and found that we own that, a, a good portion of that land. Matter of fact, all of it, that's along the old Sixth Street. So he isn't here, but I hope he's watching on TV, he got his public apology that I, I screwed up.
Okay, I'm sure he'll appreciate that. Chief, I am gonna turn the timer on you this time.
I'll be quick. Mike Tupper again, Marshalltown Police Department. Just real quick, tomorrow night, our Citizens Academy graduates. So it's Mike Hankins' last hurrah with the Citizens Academy because he plans to retire this fall. So if you're able to join us tomorrow night at Riverview Park, six PM. A great academy class this year and Dr. Shude had to leave, but he had maybe the most exciting police ride-along in the history of police ride-alongs. So buy him a beer or something, he'll tell you about it, but it was, it was exciting for him anyway. May seventeenth, Thursday, at five-thirty at the library, we're hosting a community forum regarding human trafficking. It's just an ongoing effort to bring more awareness and education to the public about human trafficking. That's at the public library on May seventeenth at five-thirty PM. And it sounds like they're gonna have pizza, so show up for some pizza. And then I just wanted to pass along, we learned today that on May fifth, former Assistant Police Chief Chuck Doan passed away on May fifth. And Assistant Chief Doan served our public, our community with pride for thirty years, retired in nineteen ninety-six. And I didn't know Chuck, but I asked around today to some people that did and I heard three things. Good cop, good man, good heart. And so if I can be so lucky as to have somebody say that about me when I pass, I'll be happy. So great guy and, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about Chuck's passing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do also have an announcement to make too. This Saturday is a big day in the community. We have our hazardous household waste drop-off at the wastewater treatment plant, eleven-hundred Woodland, from, I think it's eight AM to noon. And more information on our website about what can be taken there. And then from eight to eleven-thirty, a general large item junk drop-off at one-oh-one Iowa Avenue West, which is the old Econo food site. And so Saturday is not gonna be a sunny day, it appears, but it will be a day for people to get out and clean out your garage and get rid of all those things that have been sitting around.
Great, thank you.
And I have one thing. It is the time of year that we have a lot of peddlers that wanna sell things door-to-door. All peddlers must be registered to go door-to-door and if you have somebody going door-to-door, they should have a license with them. And if you have any questions, call dispatch when they're in the neighborhood so that they can be looked at.
Good point, thank you. If there's no other public comment, let's adjourn the meeting at six forty-six.